Afternoon, everyone. Calling this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Mr. DeHaney, if we can go ahead, and I believe we have an update coming up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. On Monday, you know, let the council know that in light of the troubling amount of shootings that we had over the weekend, that I've asked Chief Nudigay to brief the city council on each shooting incident and to respond to council questions accordingly thereafter his briefing. After the chief of police presents, we will continue with our normal briefing agenda with the exception of item number D, which, letter D, which, item D, which as previously mentioned, was pulled because the agreement with TCC is not yet ready. At this time, Chief Nudigay, go ahead and give a brief overview of the incidents that happened this weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good afternoon. I was hoping that my first official appearance before this body would be under better circumstances, but unfortunately, we had an uptick in gun violence this weekend that I want to bring to your attention. We had four shooting incidents with victims struck, relatively spread throughout the city. Of course, we're looking for clustering, which did not occur in any of these incidents. And then I will go through each incident one by one. The first shooting occurred Saturday at 8:52 hours at the North Mall Drive at the Lynnhaven Mall. We had three victims. These victims were 15 and 16 years old, individuals that had come to visit the mall from Chesapeake. What had happened is there was a confrontation inside the mall. At some point, security had escorted these young men outside. The fight continued outside, and at some point, shots were fired, and we had the three victims struck. So talking to my staff, what I understand, with the mall, this has become a new hangout for some of our young folks. Norfolk has maybe enacted some additional stricter guidelines for unaccompanied juveniles, and so we have some folks that are coming to Lynnhaven as a result of not going to Norfolk. So I know Captain Gandy has been in contact with the ownership, with the management of the mall, and we're going to start some new dialogue to help them assess their security practices. You know, the one thing that I will offer is because they have had some issues there in the past, they had off-duty PD there, they had off-duty sheriff's officers there working security, and those officers immediately responded when they heard the gunshots. So it's a very tragic set of circumstances that we had three juveniles shot, but the police presence was there, and it did not discourage the incident. The next one occurred Saturday at 10:43 hours on Whirlaway Road. We had a domestic-related shooting where Ms. Kristy Hollensworth shot a male White .45, and she was arrested at the scene and charged with a litany of crimes in regards to that incident. And then we went to the one on Whitney Court, which occurred on Sunday at 5:29 hours. Four victims, also very troubling, because we had a male Black .8 that was shot in the upper right thigh, and he was outside when the gunfire started, and a female Black .10 that was actually inside of her residence, and gunfire penetrated the wall and struck her, as well as the female Black .25 that was also inside. Based on our preliminary investigation, we believe that the male that was shot was the target of three individuals that had pulled up, exited a vehicle, and directed gunfire in his direction. The other three victims were unintended targets. And then the last one was the homicide that occurred on Newtown Road at Baker. Mr. Richard Anderson, a resident of Richmond, was a victim of homicidal violence by gunshot. He was here at a location for a party, and he had went outside, and at this point, we really don't have a good idea of what occurred. It's still early and it's investigative stages, but I assure you, the detective bureau is working very hard on all the leads that we have. So those are the individual shootings. What I wanted to do is put some context to where we stand currently in regards to our numbers. So when we look at this slide, we are at 16 total homicides year-to-date compared to 18 from last year. And what I should preface and make sure that everybody understands, that for the purpose of this slide only, just to have a general idea and a true comparison, I had them strip out the horrific numbers from May 31st of last year, because that was a singular incident, and so I really wanted to get an apples-to-apples comparison of what the average range of homicidal violence is. So total homicides, you've got to remember, 17, 18, and 19 are full years. We're only year-to-date right now with approximately two months left to go. And then we break them down even further, that we're looking at 14 gunshot homicides. So we are looking at a slight increase compared to where we would have been this time last year without the May 31st incident. What I will, and you'll always hear me talk about, is I present in front of council, and I discuss with the community, that a much better indicator of where we stand in regards to shooting violence falls in the total number of non-fatal shootings and the total shooting category. Homicides are a very small indicator of success, because each and every one of those shooting victims is a person, is an individual, and but for the grace of God, and probably millimeters at certain times, they would have been a homicide victim. So we have to look at total shooting victimization to get a much better gauge of where we stand. And unfortunately, when you look at our total shootings, fatal and non-fatal, year-to-date, you see that we have a significant increase compared to where we were at this time last year. And for reference, the three-year average, we average approximately 45 total shootings, and we are at 80. Now, what I would, we are concerned, but I'd like to provide some context to it, that when we look at shootings by month for the city of Virginia Beach, the vast majority of those shootings occurred in June and July. And what I'm finding out is Virginia Beach was not immune to what was happening to the rest of the nation. All the other major cities saw significant spikes in shooting violence during the COVID peak of March and April. They saw some cessation in May, as we started to put our officers back out on the street and reengage the community, and then when the social unrest kicked off end of May and June in most of our cities, there was a significant uptick, and Virginia Beach experienced exactly what happened with the nation in regards to this. Since June and July, those numbers are starting to revert back to the mean, but what we're going to take a look at, and I do have one more slide just to put it in reference, Major City Chiefs Association, of which Virginia Beach PD is one member of the 69 largest police departments in North America. We are all experiencing increases in certain categories. So you can see the homicide rate is up almost 30% nationwide this year compared to last year. Aggravated assaults are up significantly, and violent crime is up 2.5% nationwide. So before I take questions, I think one of the things that's incumbent upon me to address this, even though the numbers are starting to come down, I've asked our support folks out of special ops, our traffic folks, our K-9 officers are doing enhanced and additional directed patrols in some of these focused areas, augmenting what our beat folks are doing in the precincts. Our very next comstat meeting, I have directed, is going to be focused solely on Part One Violent Crime, so I have a true understanding of what our challenges are and how we address those. And as we move forward into the next year, I will be taking a hard look at what our processes are to address the number of violent crimes that occur in Virginia Beach from a holistic approach. I definitely want to make sure we address it from both a place, an offender, and a victim-based strategy. And there are a number of evidence-based empirical strategies out there that work. We already use hotspot policing here in the beach to some extent. There is always a group violence interruption that we will take a look at. We will look at what our crime-gun intelligence process is, and we'll also look to see if we need to implement a focused offender strategy. So those are all things that are available for us to take a look at and make sure that as we move into the next year, that we have a full grasp of addressing violent crime in our city. And before I take questions, I just, please, let me acknowledge my staff that worked very hard to put this presentation together. Since this occurred over the weekend, and we were tasked with this on Monday, our analytical supervisor, Kristi Mosman, Deputy Chief Gallagher, and my team worked very hard to provide this presentation today, and so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Berluci and Ms. Abbott.
Chief, thank you for your presentation and welcome again to Virginia Beach.
Thank you, sir.
You and I had a chance to speak before the meeting, and I shared with you a number of concerns that have been raised with me among neighbors and residents throughout Virginia Beach, and there are some questions that we may not have the answers to today, or we may not be privy to today, but I think there are some questions that do need to be answered in time that relate to the uptick in shooting and to the violent crime that's occurring in Virginia Beach neighborhoods, including, is this crime related to gangs? If it is, how will we respond? Are the victims related to the perpetrators, or are they random acts of violence? I think these are questions that the neighborhoods would like to know and would like to have more information and transparency about. However, in the cases of the specific incidents you mentioned, of course, there's an ongoing investigation, and it may not be appropriate to share that today, and I recognize that and respect it.
Thank you, sir.
But I would like to know, because you have a demonstrated record, one certainly to be proud of, of reducing firearm-related violence during your previous work in the city of Cincinnati, and I'm wondering if you have any plans or strategies based on the lessons you learned in Cincinnati to reduce firearm-related violence here in Virginia Beach?
I absolutely have a strong desire to assess all of that. I do have a strong background in gun violence reduction. Many of those initiatives that I mentioned have been employed to reduce gun violence. We were able to reduce it by 33% in Cincinnati prior to 2020. But what I would caution is, every city is different. I need to really thoroughly evaluate what our challenges are, what our strengths are, before I develop a strategy. You can't just replicate things that we did in Cincinnati and bring them to Virginia Beach. I really need to tailor a strategy that is specific to our challenges here, and that's what I plan on doing over the next few months. And I know historically, when we start getting into the warmer weather, April and May is when there is a national uptick in shooting violence. So while we will work short-term to address these current issues, I will be looking at a much more longer holistic plan for 2021.
Thank you, and I do have one other question. Acknowledging that some of the questions that I and others have about the nature of these acts may not be answered today, I think that there are a variety of people who hear gunshots in their neighborhoods at night or during the day, see headlines on the news about these shootings and, in fact, murders, and have a sense of anxiety and fear about them.
Absolutely.
And as our chief of police, I wonder what advice or statement or feedback do you have to share with those members of our community who are experiencing that fear and anxiety now as it relates to these acts of violence?
What I would offer, councilmen, is the PD is there for them, but my historical knowledge of addressing gun violence, I know from utilizing ShotSpotter technology in Cincinnati, and our data up there was consistent with the national model, that when you have a ShotSpotter activation in a community, that you only receive a companion call 12% to 20% of the time. So we know that 80% of the time nationally, the police do not know when gunfire is occurring in your community. So you can see, that makes it very challenging for us to develop strategies when we don't know 80% of the time where gunfire is occurring. So what I would ask them is, please call us. They have to call us, because we have to know when any and all gunfire is occurring in their communities, so we have that data, so we can deploy our personnel and our resources accordingly. But if they're afraid to call us, it creates challenges. Regardless, I ask them to pick up the phone, I plead with them to pick up the phone and call 911. We will respond expeditiously, and then we will develop strategies around their engagement.
Thank you very much, Chief. I think we're very fortunate that you're here, and I appreciate your time and presentation today.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you for the presentation and welcome to Virginia Beach. I have a question about Slide 9, and I know this was kind of a more summary briefing than in-depth, but I think that the numbers are interesting in what you pointed out in relation to COVID, and I'm curious, at a later date, could we get a presentation that details the, those of these assaults that have some kind of relationship to domestic violence and also any potential known mental duress that the perpetrator might have been under? I'm curious, and I know that Councilmember Berluci shares the same concern that I have about the mental health in our community and how we make sure that we're being preventative, and so I think having that information at a later date would be extremely valuable to us in our policy setting and thoughts moving forward. And I know that the department always has really detailed comstat reports for us, so I know that this was more of a overhead brief, but I'd be really interested in seeing how much of this was just an impact of the economic realities of COVID and the emotional realities of COVID as well. And if you have any insight on it today, I'd love to hear it.
I think it would be too presumptive to comment on that, but what I am seeing that's consistent with what I know to be a national trend and what I've experienced is, it's very hard to strip out motive and where we've fallen out, because the vast majority of our shooting victims are non-cooperative, and they provide us very little information. So it does make it a challenge, but we will definitely delve down and find out what we can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Wood and then Mr. Moss.
Thanks. And Chief, I think what you just said makes, is a good point, where you say the vast majority of the shooting victims don't cooperate, and it kind of goes back to a question I posed to you yesterday, was the, you know, are these people related, are these related to secondary crimes, you know? Drug deals gone bad, something like that? And I think that's important. I mean, these are not typically with, other than the one with the family, these are typically not just random occurrences. Is that fair to say?
Usually, there is a precipitating incident that drives many of these. I think with the incident at the mall, you know, that's juveniles fighting. It happens all the time, and unfortunately, occasionally, you will see where it breaks out in gunfire, unfortunately. I think that is just a sudden incident. The other two is still very early, while we try to figure those out, but our initial belief is, you know, for that third shooting that occurred in Twin Canals, that the adult male was the target, and usually, there is some type of precipitating relationship that resorts to gun violence. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moss, and then Ms. Henley.
Well, Chief, I just want to applaud you for not looking for the easy answers that aren't easy, and instead, I think it's very assuring to us and to the public that you're looking for analytical, science-based answers to determine what you need to do and how to deploy, and I look forward to any recommendations you will make in the future as we consider next year's budget. But I think your approach is measured, and I think it's consistent with the tradition of the department to base decisions on the data, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Ms. Henley and then Mr. Tower.
Good morning, Chief. Afternoon. In your last response to Mr. Wood, when you said, when you were referring to the shootings at the mall, and you said, you know, this is young people doing their thing, and that happens all the time, except there was a gun involved, and these are 15-year-olds.
Absolutely.
And so I think I'm gathering from your background, you've particularly looked at this issue of shooting violence, because looking at the ages and all these things, you know, this resorting to using a gun, whether it's domestic violence or kids out there doing their thing, that's the issue here that I think is so prominent that we really need to get to the bottom of.
And I concur completely, and I had conversations with the good Councilwoman Rowless about what we can do to start really embracing our juveniles and that relationship with the PD, and try to provide some structure and education and mentorship to hopefully that when these situations occur, it does not resort to gun violence. So I think there's a lot that the PD can do to really wrap our arms and embrace our juvenile population as we move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tower.
Good afternoon, Chief, and thank you for your presentation. It occurred to me when we were, you were and Mr. Berluci were talking about your experience in Ohio, that we are talking today and will for the next several meetings probably about legislative matters in the Virginia General Assembly. We live in a Dillon Rule state, and I'm curious in Ohio whether, how much leeway the city had in Cincinnati to change criminal codes and the like without state approval.
It was a home-rule state. They had the ability to many times vigorously implement legislation.
Well, welcome to the Dillon Rule. But I was just going to mention to you, I hope you are keeping track of things that you, occur to you that could use a change, because we are the largest city in the state. We do have an active lobbying force, and I hope, I know a lot of cooperation between police departments is the way things often get done, but also, we want to, we want to take action where we can, and where we can't, we want to urge that action by the General Assembly if that's what's needed, and keep an open line to you and the manager on issues of public safety as well as everything else we have to go to the legislature for.
Thank you, Councilman, and I appreciate that. And even though I've only been here four weeks, I've been very actively visiting internally with all my folks in the various commands, and there are definitely some challenges that they have brought up that would go beyond what the manager or myself could address and would need the guidance and approval of this council to help us maybe mitigate some of those circumstances. So I will definitely keep the manager in the loop as we move forward, and we need the guidance and support of this body.
We look forward to having that discussion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilson.
So Chief Nudigay, we're delighted that you are here, and so I told you earlier, in the greatest city in the world, and we think we have the greatest police in the world here. Looking at this presentation, and I'm so pleased that you, right up front to address this, to get this out for not only just us, but also for the public. So there are, it's not just Virginia Beach. I mean, we have people involved in this from other cities, and working with our young people and their young people. Do you have any thoughts of doing something regionally and working with the other cities and get them involved? Because there are no lines here. I mean, there's no one to say, stop, you're coming into another city, you know, you can't come here, so.
I agree. I think what I would love for us to do is really get some direction on process for our own youth, and then make sure that whatever we put in effect is, you know, evaluated and make sure that it is effective. And then, once we have a firm understanding that this process that we put in place between the PD, the community, our elected officials, and any other supporters, then we can look to, to ask our neighboring folks in the seven cities to collaborate on a regional approach. But I'd really like for us to pioneer it, champion it, make sure that it works for ours, and then expand.
Because I think to be truly successful, we're going to need to do that, because otherwise, you know, it's still going to keep crossing lines, and we're not going to solve this issue unless maybe we work with the other cities. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
Anyone else? Chief, thank you very much for the time, and convey to all the folks that you work with the gratitude, not only of this council, but the people of Virginia Beach making us the safest city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Have a good day.
Mr. DeHaney.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation is at the request of Councilmember Moss. The school CFO, Pharoah Hansaker, will brief council on the impacts of the potential loss of state revenue on the schools and the schools' intended use of reversion funding as well as CARES Act funding it has received.
Members of council, Mr. Hansaker is going to be presenting remotely via WebEx. Mr. Hansaker, you're ready to go. If you just pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments.
Okay. Can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please begin your comments.
Amanda, can you hear me?
Mr. Hansaker, if you could please begin your comments. We can hear you. We can't keep both lines open because of the reverb. Please begin.
Um, I don't know if you can hear me or not. Okay.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. And I want to make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me now?
Mr. Hansaker, we can hear you. Please proceed with your presentation.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with information regarding our reversion fund request and also regarding the two additional CARES grants that we have received. Dr. Spence is also here via this WebEx virtual meeting to assist questions that you might have for him. This presentation covers our reversion requests and also two additional CARES Act grants. I'll stop at the end of the reversion presentation for any questions and clarifications, and then I'll move forward with a few slides from the CARES Act. Next slide, please. As you see on this slide, we try to provide you enough information that you can clearly see the amount of money that's available to us. The first part of the slide lists several of the different revenue sources, and that came in over budget totaling $6,391,546. Add that to where we began at the top with the $30,817,555, and you get a subtotal of We also have two separate funds, Athletic Fund and Green Run Collegiate had reversions. Add those to the $37 million, you get $39,027,626. We also realized a shortfall of the revenue sharing formula for schools of the $2,724,349, leaving an available amount for reappraisalation of the $36,303,277. Next slide, please. This is just to help clarify where we are and how we wound up at the end of June. That $36,303,277 is actually 4.3% of our operating budget. Historically, about for the last 10 years, our reversions have hovered around the 2% We were projecting $23 million shortfall of city funds. That was communicated to us early, I think in late April, that that's the projected shortfall of the revenue sharing funds. And we also were projecting a $2 million shortfall of state funds. We projected the state sales tax would come in short of the budget amount. Those totaled $25 million. So if we had actually realized that shortfall, we would have had a reversion amount of $11,303,277, you can see on the slide there. slide there. That's 1.3% of the budget. We also had no idea that we would have this amount of revenues coming in over budget. So if you subtract those revenues, if they actually came in under budget, over budget, you would have had a reversion of $4,917,31 That's 0.6%. So just to put in perspective where we wound up at the end of the year, and because we didn't have the shortfalls that we were projecting, and we didn't anticipate the additional revenues, here's what it would have looked like. Next slide, please. Our proposed spending plan for the $36,303 is shown on the slide. We're showing the amount of each of the items that we're requesting, and then showing the available balance in the far right column. As you can see here on the slide, we're projecting a $5.5 million of the reversion to put in the special revenue, schools' revenue account. If you recall, over the years, we've been using one-time funds out of the Special Reserve Fund to cover annual shortfalls in the operating budget. The current year, we have $5.8 million. We want to reduce it a little bit each year, or as much as we can each year. So we're reducing it by $300,000. So we'll put $5.5 million of the reversion into Special Revenue Fund. The next two items are, we're asking for them to be directed to the CIP program. The first one is to complete the expansion of the Lynnwood Haven, Lynnhaven Middle School expansion for the Achievable Dream, that $8,750,000. And the Princess Sand High School replacement, you know, those, that project's significantly underfunded. So we want to allocate $7,53,277 to that. We, we heard the council loud and clear over the last year or two where you were concerned that we were putting virtually no money into CIP from our reversions. And so we're making sure that you see that we're trying to address that with these reversion funds. Then our, our Risk Management Fund is running very low, and our projections are that we may be in a situation where we don't have enough money at the end of the year in that fund. We are going to ask that $2 million be put in the Risk Management Fund, leaving $13 million. We're asking that one, a one-time bonus of $1,000 for all full-time equivalent employees be allocated. That's a total of $11 million, leaving the $2 million. And we're having to, with a combination of the CARES money that we're getting, we need an additional $2 million to put aside for the stipend for teachers. And the stipend is where teachers are having to teach students face-to-face in the classroom. At the same time, they have a group of students that are virtual that they're also teaching. So they're, it's a dual duty situation for teachers. It's a fairly expensive option for us, and we don't really have a choice because of the social distancing and the mitigations that we have to have once all the students are back face-to-face. Next slide. This is just the reversion resolution. I think the city attorneys already put this language in, in the ordinance for you. I would just point out, in this reversion resolution, and then I'll stop on the reversion after that, that, in that, we just highlighted for you in the reversion resolution where we were projecting a $25 million shortfall. And in the second, whereas, where we took significant steps, once we were concerned about having a shortfall in last year of deactivating all procurement cards, canceling all, or delaying all nonessential projects, and limiting purchases to items and services only to items essential to the emergency. So that was our effort to make sure that we actually could save $25 million and not overspend the budget. I'm going to stop right there. That, I don't intend to go through the full reversion resolution as you already have that available. But let me stop and ask, do you have any questions or any items that we need to clarify?
Mr. Moss.
Well, first of all, I'm very happy to see the investment in CIPs. It aligns with the extra $7 million that we took out of the city's side of the budget to compensate for the reductions in revenues so we could get closer. And that went to CIP from school modernization. So I do think there's alignment between the both parties' priorities. I would be interested in a later date. Traditionally, the majority of your reversion funding has been generated by under-execution of personnel costs, and that's where the largest portion of that money historically has come from. I'd be interested, it's not prejudicial to my vote on the resolution, but I would like to have an insight as to how much of the reversion funds this, last year being carried forward, was attributable to under-execution personnel costs relative to other years. It's also true for the city, too. So I'm not pointing anything out, but I would like to have that insight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Anybody else? Okey-dokey. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Hansaker, if you'd like to continue your presentation.
I think it's maybe two slides past the reversion. Okay, then the next slide. This slide just recaps the first CARES Act funding that we received. It was $10,149,000. I'm sorry, $10,141,569, of which some of that had to be allocated for private schools. That was $380,000. You have already appropriated this money to us. So I just wanted to recap. This is money, this is the first CARES grant we got, and you have already appropriated that to us on August the 25th. Next slide, please. This is a new grant we just received. You can see the $397,953 plus $236,708. Again, a portion of these funds, which have to be set aside for private schools, and that's $18,157. Note, this grant, we are allowed to cover expenses from March the 13th through September of 2022. And the previous slide, the $10,149, we also have that same period of time from March 13th, 2020 through September of 2022. And next slide. This is the most recent grant that we just got. We got late notice from the state on this one. We call it the CRF Award Grant in the amount $11,677,033. I will point out, this one, we have to spend the money, we can go back and capture expenses from March 1st, 2020, but we only have until December the 30th of this year to spend these funds. We are more than confident that we will be able to spend this money by the deadline. One of the strategies that we're using is since we have a longer dead, a later deadline for that first $10,149, and the second grant, we have much longer deadline, we're going to take some things that we were going to charge to that first grant because we've got a longer timeline on that, and we're going to move them to be spent with these grant funds. The types of things that we'll be spending this money on, and the other grants also, they have to be related to the COVID-19 virus. We are spending a ton of money on PPE, which is gloves, masks, safety glasses, et cetera. A million, at least a million, almost a million four. We have to have some additional computing devices for students and staff. It's headphones, web cameras, keyboards, et cetera. A million three, interactive whiteboards. A lot of the whiteboards, interactive boards we have now, we've got to replace, and the teachers use them also in the virtual classrooms and in the face-to-face classrooms. Plexiglass, we didn't think we were going to have to put Plexiglass panels in, but they are in most of our elementary classrooms. This Plexiglass panels separate the students that sit at a common desk. Cleaning supplies, electro, electric static sprayers, mist, fogging units, trigger sprayers, disinfectant, et cetera, almost a million dollars. Outdoor additional wireless activity at various schools, almost a half a million dollars. COVID-related signage in every building, assisted technology and resources for students with special needs, HVAC, coal cleaning, and on and on and on. So those are example. Oh, in addition, we will use the CARES money to pay these dual task stipends for the teachers that are teaching students face-to-face and virtually. We also had employed additional months of service for nurses during the summer and before the beginning of the school year, and now we're having to supplement that because our nurses are involved in the contact tracing, which is a significant amount of time. Let me just stop there because I'm not going to go through the actual resolutions and answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, no questions, sir. Okay, would that conclude the briefing at this point? Okay, thank you very much for the, your participation, and look forward to seeing you next week, virtually. Okay, moving on, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, in response to several complaints from constituents in regards to enforcement infractions given to them due to parking certain vehicles deemed commercial by statute in residential neighborhoods, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and Councilmember Wooton requested that staff look into possible ways that policies can be amended to allow for appropriate exceptions. Staff working with the city attorney's office identified some options that we want to brief the council on before we take next steps in terms of drafting legislation for public input and council's consideration. Andrew Friedman and also Wells, Wells Freed is going to give a presentation on the possible options to allow some relief for our citizens.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager, members of council. I'm Andy Friedman, Director of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. And Wells Freed, our Code Enforcement Director, administrator is here with me. I'm going to do just a little bit of context on code enforcement for you, and then he's going to provide you with an overview of the subject that you asked for the briefing on and an option for you to consider. The Code Enforcement Division is a comprehensive consolidated group of activities that have been consolidated over the years, and it includes a variety of things that make it very effective and efficient for inspectors to go around the city and identify issues that affect our citizens. Oh, thank you. So I'm going to give you just a brief overview of that, and then Wells is going to talk about the code requirements that are in question and an option for amending that. So our Code Enforcement Division enforces both city and state codes on private properties and structures. We want to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, maintain safe, safety and appearance of private property. We have 19 inspectors, both investigating complaints and doing patrol around their assigned zones. And we go through city and state processes to address violations. These are examples of some of the things that we address. Anything having to do with a building maintenance violation, both interior and exterior, any unsafe structures, overgrowth, or otherwise known as tall grass, and the accumulation of trash and junk, inoperable vehicles, and this is what we're going to talk about today, parking and storage of commercial and recreational vehicles. We address graffiti on private property and offer no-cost abatement. We address unsafe gas and electrical appliances, and we abate nuisances when the owner's not able to do so. So at this point, I'm going to have Wells talk about the current code requirements for the commercial and recreational vehicles, and then go through an option that you can consider.
Thank you, Andy. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Dehaney. So I'll run through these other slides, as Andy said here. And first of all, we took over enforcement of this ordinance from the zoning division of the planning department in 2011. No changes to the basic requirements were made at that time. The code defines a commercial vehicle as a loaded or empty motor vehicle trailer or semi-trailer designed or used for carrying freight, merchandise, or more than 10 passengers. So vehicle use is not only the determining factor with this ordinance. Design is also considered with that. The ordinance states that parking of commercial vehicles in residential and apartment zones is prohibited except for three situations. The first is one commercial vehicle, under 7 feet high, 20 feet long, and less than 1 ton in carrying capacity can now be parked on a residential lot if there is a building owned or occupied by the resident. So this is where most of our infractions come from, is this, this exception. The second exception is for commercial vehicles that are parked at a residence while actively performing a service. And the third is for semi-trailers used for storage on active construction sites. Violations of the ordinance do constitute a Class III misdemeanor. So I included this slide to show the council that there is a second ordinance pertaining to this that the police enforce, which today is not proposed for any changes, but this regulates parking of these vehicles in the public street. So the issue that we were asked to look into is where residents are purchasing commercial cargo vans and passenger vans for personal use and parking them on residential property. So currently, this does constitute a violation of the code. These vehicles are often exceed the size limitations. And here's an example of that. This is a Ford Transit van, 22 feet long, 9 feet high, exceeds the carrying capacity, and exceeds the 10-passenger limitation. Got another photograph, two of those vehicles at the same property. So what we came up with was a code amendment option, and should you decide to allow these types of vehicles to be parked in residential and apartment zones, you could add a fourth exception to the code to allow for one personal-use cargo van or passenger-style van on residential exception to the code to allow for one personal-use cargo van or passenger-style van on residential property. You could also limit and exclude, continue to exclude vehicles that had commercial markings, cargo, cargo racks, et cetera, and any vehicles that are used for camping or recreational purposes are normally permitted already through the other city ordinances, as long as they're stored on the sides of the home or in the rear. So under that proposed change, these are some of the types of vehicles that you will see, similar to the Ford Transit-style vehicle. Various manufacturers make these types of vehicles. And what would not be permitted under the ordinance are these types of vehicles. Obvious commercial use, vehicles that are marked, that have racks, cargo, large food truck-style vehicles, step vans. Some additional examples of what would continue to be prohibited in residential zones. Of course, these, every other vehicle we see on the street these days. So the options are today for council to give us direction on the proposed exception that we presented or provide us direction on alternative to that or suggest that we do not make any changes to the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thanks, and in reviewing this, I don't see references to pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks, normally we don't enforce any of those codes on them. Most of the time, those, unless they're connected to a large trailer, are usually going to be exempt already under the code.
All right, because you all have been enforcing that on some of them over in, what's that neighborhood? Sabrina, help me out, what's the name of that neighborhood? That's where my in-laws live, anyway. I know, I know that there's been, pardon, not the area, jumped out of my head, but there has been a number of these that have been enforced, and I know that there was one on a, on a van that I brought a concern about that you all indicated, at least initially, the comments I got back from you saying you didn't think there should be any changes to the ordinance, and now you're saying, well, we should change some of it, and I'm, I've got a concern about that because these things, you know, have titles that indicate that they're passenger vehicles, and I think, I think that's a concern. I mean, I'm glad we're taking, taking this, this Transit-type van thing, but I think it needs to go further. So I assume, Mr. Stiles, we're going to be working on, on an ordinance change? That's how this would, would happen?
Yeah, we're looking for direction. We're looking for direction from the council and what you would like to see. We're trying to draw, it's, it's a difficult line to draw here because you've got to, you've got to take into account the need of people who need these larger vehicles, but you also don't want to open the door so wide that the fundamental character of the neighborhoods change. So we need direction on where to proceed.
Okay, Indian Lakes is what I was thinking. And, and I, and I think that, I think that's good, but I think there are, there are some others that, that fall through the cracks here, and if people can buy these things off, off the, off the street, from, off of a car lot, the way they are, and title them as, as non-commercial vehicles, and I think we need to, we need to be cognizant of that. I understand trailers and dump trucks and car carriers and Amazon vans and things like that, but, but, but I think we need to, we need to take a look at that. But okay, I'll, I'll get with you on that, Mr. Stiles, thank you.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, I was aware, and I believe Ms. Wooten is also of a gentleman that lived in the Centerville district that has a lot of kids, and that's why he has a multi, it's not commercial. And then there was some confusion along the way where, you know, somebody told him it was okay a while ago, then it was reinforced and everything. But I think as long as they're not designated as commercial vehicles and they don't look like a commercial vehicle, but, you know, some folks do have, you know, particular needs, you know, I treated a patient a couple of years ago, had 10 kids, you know, it's, you know, but once again, I think we have to use rules of reason that apply here, and obviously, a really designated commercial truck that looks like a huge commercial truck with marking and commercial plates is far different than somebody that's practically using it, you know, for pure family and convenience purposes. I guess, you know, what do you think?
What is the exemption or consideration for people that are handicapped? And I noticed I didn't see it, and I was surprised, and maybe it's covered somewhere else in the code, that have a vehicle because of whatever their need to pull their whole wheelchair in and out, which I assume with handicap plates, and they would, I think, could even park on the street, I would hope. But what is the exemption or the criteria for addressing handicap vehicles that might not otherwise meet the size requirement but are driven by the necessity of the handicap of the individual?
Yes, sir, we've implemented a policy to address any medical accommodation requests, such as what you've described there, and that carries over to commercial or recreational vehicles. We implemented that with some form letters from the city attorney's office, and, but there's nothing in the code that suggests that as of yet.
Well, I think there needs to be a cross-reference, so when people are seeing this, they don't have to know that there is a policy. I think we ought to just have a cross-reference or a footnote that makes that explicit. The other concern I have, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I'm sure you all see it in other neighborhoods where the employer provides a vehicle for the person to work, and that's really part of their compensation. I can take you through any number of neighborhoods and show you where there is more than one pickup truck with a signage on it for the company for which they work. Often, these are, sometimes homes with three or four people unrelated are renting a house, and they're having it. So I just want to make sure that we understand the second and third order effects of a change we might make, and now all of a sudden, we create this demand for external storage lots that are scarce in supply, we allow an increase in the price of that. In the end, we think we've achieved something, but the cure is worse than the problems that we create. I just, I don't know how we account for that, but I think we need to reach out a little bit, Mr. Mayor, to figure out, because there's a lot of people who get a vehicle from their company as a means of coming to and from work, and if they then had to go and buy a vehicle, that would be a whole different financial issue for them, like people who take school buses home and they park it nearby, and there's a reason why they do that. I'm just trying to make sure that we've thought about, I think, and I realize people, if you have that military vehicle and someone's parking it in their front yard, that's probably an issue. I don't know how you draw that fine line between common sense, good neighborly decency, and regulations, but I just want to make sure that, you know, just because it looks like a nail doesn't mean we have to use a hammer. I really would like to know what, how would that, how would we deal with that? And are we going to create another issue? And then people who didn't show up before, show up tomorrow saying, hey, I got to buy a car now, you know, I got to do this, I got to do that, and no one ever thought what that would be. So I think we've got to have some, as you often say, Mr. Mayor, I think this is, there's got to be a common ground here, but I think we need to make sure we know the unintended consequences of the policy change on people who have a commercial vehicle provided by their employer, and that's part of their compensation package. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. I, I share the similar concerns on the code. Just for clarification, is this largely enforced on a complaint basis?
It, I've got some figures here for you, so. It's enforced by complaint and proactively, and annually, it's about, about 800 violations a year.
So when you say proactively, does that mean somebody from y'all's department drives around the city looking for it?
Yes.
Okay, and so the reason I ask, and I live in Indian Lakes, and I can't tell you how many commercial vehicles are always parked in my neighborhood, and for the most part, most of those people are self-employed, you know, and you're talking, you know, a plumber who has a cargo van for his plumbing business, and you're, you know, or electrician or contractor, and, you know, and in addition to that, just families who want bigger vehicles or want some type of utility vehicle because it helps them with their day-to-day lives. And I, I am concerned about going to one of my neighbors who I know is electrician and saying, hey, that commercial vehicle that I don't, as your neighbor, have never thought anything of, now you have to go find a place to park it because, you know, somebody doesn't like how it looks. So I, I'm concerned about that, that policy. I'm curious, is the history on this ordinance and why it came to be? I think a lot of our neighborhoods are really just self-employed people, and asking them to find a place to park their commercial vehicle is almost unfair because they, it would, it would create an undue burden. So I would like more education on the history of the ordinance and, and why, I guess, why we are so proactively enforcing otherwise. If the vehicle's well-maintained, if it's being parked in someone's driveway, I guess I need to understand that in greater detail, and I realize if something's out of inspection or doesn't have an active tag or is a dilapidated vehicle, there'd be some concern for trying to make sure that that doesn't become a bigger problem, but I do think it could potentially create an unfair burden on some other people.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could address, I have a question for Mr. Moss and a response to Ms. Abbott. Ms. Abbott, we're not, just to be clear, we're, this is an exemption that would allow more vehicles than are currently allowed, so this, this ordinance has been in effect more than 10 years. I'm not sure of the history, we can ask the planning department about that. Mr. Moss, I was concerned whether you were suggesting that what we were proposing to change would allow more vehicles, or were you saying that we should be less strict? I wasn't sure.
Well, I was getting after, I know we adopted a policy, and I was on city council at the time, and so was Eva McLannan, and so was Mrs. Henley, and maybe Mr. Jones can't be certain, but I know Mrs. Parker was. But since then, we've had a whole different economy emerge. The gig economy, more self-employed economy, and I'm just bringing up that rather than, since we're looking at changing and proposing to change, the only thing I'm suggesting is that that examination really needs to look at the underlying relevance and executability of the policy as it is, and, and also then would inform what it should be to reflect the reality of how people work today and what the compensation working relationships are, and I think that will take more than just the people around this table to discern what that is, but that was a different time, and that's 1986, 1990 timeframe, and all that stuff, the billboard, lots of things that we did. But the world has radically changed on how we work, how we employ, and working from home, and I just think that, and I realize this would allow a vehicle, but a nondescript vehicle doesn't address the fundamental aspect. I think if we strictly enforced the policy, I think this room would be full and overflowing out into the street, telling us that it's not realistic. So I'm just saying is, I prefer not to stick my finger in a hornet's nest unless I'm prepared to get stung, so I'm really hoping that as we look at this, it's a, a more holistic look, and it reflects the way people work and live today, and that's the point I was trying to make. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to amplify.
Thank you, and I would just ask, suggest, if we, based following up on Mr. Moss's comments, we could have a public input process on this and, and address the issue that you guys are addressing, which is, there are, and that's why this has really come up. There are new vehicles that people are using for new reasons, there's a lot of home employment, and as, as Mr. Stiles said, we're looking for your guidance on this. We could have a public engagement process of some sort and then produce, you know, show you what those results are, and then come back with a, a new proposal, if that would be acceptable.
I, I think that's the direction to go, Andy, and, but once again, I think as a city, you know, that goes through changing times and, you know, vehicles have certainly changed over the last 10 years, and they're probably going to change, who knows, we're going to be going to autonomous vehicles and what brings us in the future. But right now, I think to accommodate a family person that has a vehicle that is reasonable, I don't think that it's an unreasonable ask that we use a reasonable person standard to say that we should accommodate these folks. But once again, I think Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott bring up a thing. Can you bring us some draft ordinances that, you know, we can hash out, that, you know, reflect the changing times, but also takes into consider, you know, the consideration the needs of some people and the families? And I think we could do that and maintain the neighborhoods. Mr. Tower?
One quick question. The prohibition on the Amazon Prime vehicles, I just want to make sure I understand, that's because of the commercial markings?
Because of the size of the vehicles.
Oh, it's because of the size. They're, they're, they exceed, I'm, I'm so familiar with those, I'm trying to get a grasp in my head of what kind of, what the limits are of these, but they're too big.
Right, most of those are, are going to exceed nine feet in height, similar to the transit vans described here. They're a little smaller than that, but most of them are going to exceed that height limit.
All right, so we're going to, we're going from 7 and 20 to 9 and 22 is the proposal that you're talking about?
We haven't proposed any changes in terms of the sizes at this point.
Okay.
Ms. Wooten.
Thank you for bringing the proposal to us, I really appreciate it. Mr. Gonzalez did reach out and was very concerned because he uses the vehicle for his growing family. But one of the things that he also mentioned was paying taxes. I believe he said he pays, he does not pay commercial taxes, he pays personal property taxes on that vehicle, which was confusing to him as well. And, and I don't know if that's an issue for us or not, but it was confusing to him to be paying personal property taxes on a vehicle, not commercial, but being, I guess, issued a citation for a commercial vehicle.
Right, and that goes back to the ordinance requirement, which focuses on both use and design, and what he fell into was this vehicle was designed to carry more than 15, or more than 10 passengers, and it was by the city code's current definition, a commercial vehicle.
And so he still would pay the, the personal property taxes, not commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that would go back to his registration, he's got it registered as a personal vehicle.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Andy, do you have enough direction to move forward at this point?
Is the council in favor of us doing a public engagement process to get some more input before we come back with a proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, that way, and then, because once again, once this passes, there has to be an education component, so people are brought up to speed on the, you know, the results of our action.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks a bunch, very good, thank you for doing this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next item is Deputy City Manager Williams, and Assistant City Attorney Dana Harmeyer is going to provide you with a briefing on certain state legislative changes needed for the dome site. Following the dome site briefing, Deputy City Manager Williams will brief you on the recommendation of the CVB task force, which will need state legislative approval. We'll be bringing more detailed information regarding the CVB task force recommendation in early December.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. As City Manager said, this additional legislative item has come up during our transition of the due diligence period into the pre-development phase of the development agreement for Atlantic Park, also known as the Dome Site. And then we do have an item we want to bring to your attention for a future consideration, but wanted to put it on your radar today for another potential item. So as, as a little bit of background, you may recall that through an act of the General Assembly, we were authorized to use a portion of the sales and use tax generated on-site at the Dome Site to support Sports and Entertainment District, as it was dubbed in the legislation. This was originally approved in the 2019 General Assembly. Later that year, we had the adoption of the development agreement, and in that agreement, it's referred to as Knight Wagner, who were the patrons of the original legislation. At the city's request, earlier this year, we amended it once we understood the mechanisms by which we would have a portion of the financing for the project, and so it was amended to authorize the use of a community development authority, or CDA, to assist with that gap financing for certain improvements. It also made an amendment for the entitlement dates when, when it could be used, at the 20th anniversary of the completion of the project, and at the time, it was, it was considered that 20 years would be the duration of the bonds that would be issued by the CDA. During the due diligence phase, as we've looked at the need for acquisition of additional parcels, which we have identified so far that you've been made aware of, of the Norfolk Southern-owned and Dominion Power-operated parcel on 18th Street, adjacent to the parcel that we own on 18th Street, that the notion that there may be some phasing because of the retirement of the Atlantic substation that Virginia Power operates, that there were implications that were identified by bond counsel as we looked at. there were implications that were identified by bond counsel as we looked at the, the language that required clarification in the act. And I'm going to ask Associate City Attorney Dana Harmer to address what has been recommended by bond counsel and agreed to by the developer, and we recommend your consideration for inclusion in our legislative agenda that is under your consideration next week.
So there are two issues. The first issue seeks to marry the outside date of any CDA bonds issued for this project with the outside date of the sales tax redirect authorized in Knight Wagner. And then the second is a technical fix to the, to the language about refunding the debt. The current language seems to suggest that you would only refund if you were seeking to avoid default. This really technical amendment would allow refunding to save money on interest costs, which would be consistent with any other refunding of city debt. And in review with bond counsel, we believe these two amendments are consistent with the intent of Knight Wagner, and that this request will assist in moving this project forward.
So before, moving on to the other item, are there any questions for that?
Any questions on that? Mr. Moss?
Question is, is the land purchasing, the part which I have to abstain from, is that the driver for the amendment of either one of those sections?
It's the driver for the amendment to the development agreement that the council's going to have to review going forward. And with that being amended, if, if the council approves that amendment, that would, I believe, focus the first edit, which is really the, the duration of the bonds portion of, of this legislation.
I'll mention that, Mr. Mayor, therefore, I would abstain voting and would ask at the appropriate time next Tuesday, the question be divided so I could abstain on one and vote for the other. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dana, very much.
Yeah, Mr. Williams?
Okay. The se, the second item entitled consideration for Virginia Beach Tourism Authority. As you know, you appointed in July the establishment of the CVB Community Task Force. I believe we have Diana Howard and Laura Hubbard here that are, have been members of the task force over the past couple of months. The task force has met essentially every other Friday, they met six times for a duration of three hours each. And with a lot of information and of both national level and, and other locations have analyzed the structure, which was the task that, that you assigned them for our destination marketing organization, which is our convention and visitors bureau. We are not bringing a full report to you today. You need, you need time to have a full report. And so we're asking that we come back on December first and give you the full analysis and determination that the, that the task force made this past Friday, and that is to make the recommendation for a tourism authority, which fell under that hybrid model that we described in the report that Bill Hambury first gave to you in February and again later this summer. A tourism authority uses a model that is based on the Virginia Tourism Authority, the Virginia Tourism Corporation. There are a couple of other models in the state, but it would require legislative action, and that's why we're bringing it to your attention today, to know that it could be an item that we will ask your amending of the package after you adopt the package next week. So again, we will be putting together the report and presenting the findings to you on December first.
Any questions? Mr. Moss?
Not for them, but for the person who took Bob Mathias's place, I just want to make sure that we know the legislative timeline for introducing bills and when that hopper closes, so that we can make sure that whatever timeline we have is aligned with that, and more importantly, doesn't use the holiday season for community participation. But I just think we need to see all those timelines to make sure we can meet our obligations to our citizens for meaningful participation, and at the same time, be responsive to the gatekeeping function of the General Assembly enrichment for bills.
Yes, sir. We're working within that context.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I guess we're all set for next week.
Mr. Mayor, as previously, as previously mentioned, item D regarding the MOU with Tidewater Community College is not ready to be presented. More work needs to be done to finalize it prior to bringing it to council, so we're going to move on to item E, which is the pending planning items. This final briefing will provide you with a glimpse of the planning items that will come before you on November seventeenth. Bill Landflair and Kevin Kemp from the planning department will provide you with a glimpse.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Planning Director and I will be briefing you this afternoon on those items that you will hear on November seventeenth. We have twenty regular items scheduled for November seventeenth. The council was previously briefed on the first three items, which were originally scheduled to be heard on October sixth. If there are no questions regarding these items, I would like to start the briefing actually on item number four. Item four is a request for a conditional use permit for a home occupation located in the Lakeview Park neighborhood of the Bayside District. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for personal training services. The training services will be conducted indoors and limited to a maximum of four persons. There is sufficient parking in the large driveway area to accommodate clients. There is no known opposition. Item five is a request for a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage located on Cleveland Street in the Central Village District of the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to provide auto collision services in an existing building. These services will occupy the entire fifteen thousand square foot building. Storage of cars prior to and following repairs will be on-site. All work and storage of materials will occur within the building. Minor exterior changes to the building include new paint and canopies, new building signage, and changes to the logo on the existing monument sign. The existing entrance from Aragona Boulevard will be reconfigured to accommodate additional storage of cars in the rear of the property. A deviation to the fence height along Aragona Boulevard is required to ensure proper screening. There is no known opposition. Item six is a request for a subdivision variance for property located on Sandbridge Road in the Princess Anne District. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure two parcels, each developed with a single-family dwelling. Neither lot in their current configuration meets the minimum upland acreage requirement for lot area outside of water, marsh, wetlands, or AE floodplain. While the proposed layout increases the upland area for one lot, making it more conforming, the area outside the AE floodplain for the second lot becomes less conforming. Therefore, a subdivision variance is required. No additional development rights are created, and a floodplain variance will be required for any new development. There is no known opposition.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
The proposed homes, are they going to be in the AE zone, or will they be outside of it?
I believe they'll be outside of it.
Okay. Do you, do, do we have a, a site plan showing where they are in relation to the AE?
We can provide such a site plan for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There are no new homes proposed. These are the existing homes.
That's correct.
None of them has been there a hundred years or so.
I, I misunderstood. I thought they were building new homes.
No, no. One's been there for literally a hundred years, the other's been there for about twenty or thirty years.
Then that's not necessary.
Just to also answer your question, Councilmember Abbott, if the, if the lots were to be constructed on, they would require a floodplain variance because they would be in the floodplain, subject to special restrictions, and the lots would be created after the date that was created in the ordinance. So you will see it if it does get constructed on again, and if they need to do that development.
I have a follow-up question if I could.
Yes.
With the Chesapeake Bay Act, if you tear down a structure, but you stay within the original footprint, within a two-year period of time, you can build without having to meet new compliance, that's a, that's a grandfather provision if you just, if you take down. But you have to stay within the footprint. Does that hold true here, that if people don't, don't expand the footprint behind the original structure, that they too then are exempt from compliance?
At, at the minimum, they would have to meet the floodplain elevation requirements. Typically, these, this home, I think, that exists on the lot is under the typical size that most developers or anyone would build at the moment, so they would still need some type of variance. But that being said, the one that has no, or, they would have to be protected from the floodplain elevation, but potentially, I'd have to look into it, but potentially.
I would appreciate a thought-out, authoritative written answer, and I'm sure my peers would as well. Thank you very much.
Item seven is a request for a subdivision variance for property located in the Lakeview Park neighborhood in the Bayside District. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure two undeveloped parcels, neither of which meets the minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet for properties in the R forty residential district. As the proposed reconfiguration results in a further reduction in lot area for one of the parcels, a subdivision variance is required. While the minimum lot area will not be met for the lots, the reconfiguration results in a balance of square footage and shape. No additional development rights are created by the re-subdivision. The president of the Lakeview Park Civic League provided a letter and spoke in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing regarding the creation of any lots below the minimum standards. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the application. Item eight is a request.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Hold on. Could you make sure that we get a copy of what that letter is?
Certainly.
And did he speak at the actual meeting?
He did. He did speak at the meeting.
And can we get a verbatim of that, please?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, because, you know, one of the things to talk about is community participate. I'd like just to see what his objections were, or the neighborhoods were.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Item eight is a request for a conditional use permit for a residential kennel located on Mundon Point Road in the Princess Anne District. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit for a residential kennel for up to thirteen show dogs. The applicant trains and shows these dogs around the country. The kennel is not open to the general public, and no overnight boarding of dogs is proposed with this request. The proposed one thousand square foot kennel will be soundproofed and air-conditioned. There were three speakers in support at the Planning Commission hearing. All expressed their appreciation for the applicant's desire to engage the neighbors in advance of filing the application. Item nine is a request for a conditional use permit for an automobile service station garage located at the corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard and North Witch Duck Road in the West Campus District of the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to provide oil change services within a new seventeen hundred square foot building. Landscape screening above the minimum standards will be provided around the perimeter of the property, in addition to the conversion of existing impervious area within a utility easement to grass. The proposed architecture will meet design guidelines. There is no known opposition. Items ten and eleven are requests for street closures adjacent to eight thirty-three and eight thirty-seven South Atlantic Avenue in the Croatan Neighborhood Beach District. The applicant's request to close half of the fifteen-foot wide, platted, and unimproved alley located behind their properties. A viewers' meeting was held and a determination made that the proposed closures will not result in a public inconvenience. Typical conditions are recommended, which include dedication of a public drainage easement. There is no known opposition. If there are no questions, I will now turn the briefing over to the Planning Director to review with you the short-term rental applications scheduled for November seventeenth.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mayor, members of council, going through the short-term rental conditional use permit applications, you currently have one, four that are recommended for approval by staff and denial by the Planning Commission. Item number twelve is at twenty-one thirteen Pacific Avenue in the Beach District for short-term rental. The request is a two-bedroom unit within a fifteen-unit condominium. Two parking spaces are required. The condominium does share extra guest spaces, however, there aren't enough spaces to provide two spaces, provide one space for this unit at a solely as it operates. So the applicant has also noted that they will be directing folks to the Twenty-Fifth Street Municipal Parking Garage whenever they are full. Again, staff recommends approval, Planning Commission also recommended approval. Next is at five fourteen Pinewood Drive by Andrew Gregory. Staff recommended approval, and by a six-to-three vote, the Planning Commission recommended denial. This property is zone R five S, a residential district and oceanfront. It is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Three off-street parking spaces are required, and three are provided. I will note that this application did come in earlier, but the property had two violations on it, one dealing with a fence and a, another one dealing with an accessory structure that were installed without permits in the rear of the property. And also, they were also off the actual property, on city property. One of the conditions is to install a fence to prohibit guests from driving over the sidewalk, because there is no curb and gutter at this location and parking in front of the home. The applicant has already installed the fence. They will need to obtain a permit for that fence. There was letters and one speaker in support and two speakers in opposition noting that there were concerns with the operation of the use next to a residential character and that they have already been operating. Item number fourteen is by Sean Riley at six oh four Twenty-third and a Half Street in the Beach District. It is zoned R five D. It is a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling, and they are, they are proposing to have three parking spaces on the property and lease the fourth parking space at the Twenty-Fifth Street Parking Garage. There is no known opposition to this request. Item number fifteen is by Red Lion Properties LLC at ten zero-nine Barclay Square. Staff recommended approval, and by eight-to-zero vote, the Planning Commission recommended denial. This is a two-bedroom condominium unit in a condominium complex. Two off-street parking spaces are required, and two off-street parking spaces are provided. At the Planning Commission public hearing, the applicant was asked if they would accept the recently imposed conditions by city council regarding the change in number of guests and number of stays per week, and they were not agreeable to that. Number sixteen is by Justice Swango at eight eleven Delaware Avenue. This is a request for a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. They have spaces for enough parking spaces for three cars, which is the requirement for the parking. The applicant neither agreed or disagreed with the required imposed conditions that council may impose recently. The Planning Commission did recommend approval on a six-to-two vote.
Yes. Question?
So, I, can you clarify that last statement for me?
The applicant stated that if the council chose to impose the condition on them, of course, they would follow the condition. But in principle, they do not agree with the change in the, in the number of guests and the number of stays per week.
Bellucci.
Mr. Tahan, do you have a photo of this property?
I just don't have that package on me at the, at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item is item number seventeen by Lawrence and Suzanne Alessco at four thousand five Atlantic Avenue, Unit one seventeen. Staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission on a nine-to-zero vote also recommended approval. This is in condominium units, or condominium building that the council has approved previous short-term rentals in. There's a, it is a one-bedroom unit. They do have one parking space dedicated to the unit. There are, is no known opposition to this request. Number eighteen is by Gigi Property Management in the Rose Hall District at seven thirteen North Gate Court. The proposal is for a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling as a short-term rental. The, in order to accommodate the five parking spaces, additional parking area would need to be installed, with a portion of the two parking spaces would be overhanging the pub- to be installed, with a portion of the two parking spaces would be overhanging the public right-of-way but not impeding pedestrian or vehicular access. During the Planning Commission public hearing, the, there were speakers that were against the operation, that had concerns with the traffic flow in the court, as well as impacts on the neighbors as the person, as the property has already been utilized as a short-term rental. Staff did recommend approval, but at the Planning Commission, they recommended denial by seven to zero.
I just have a question.
John, my apologies, John.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. I assume that since they were operating and didn't have this, that consistent with other past communications, that they now are not operating?
That is, well, that is how we would be relayed. We will double-check it before the council hearing next week to see their operations. We did check this prior to, prior to when this briefing was supposed to occur, which is at the October meeting. They had not rented within thirty-one to sixty days, so they had already ceased at that point.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number nineteen is by Valerie Taylor at thirty-six forty-four Britt Terrace. Staff recommend approval. Planning Commission by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention recommended approval. It is for a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Top rate is a short-term rental. Property is zone R seven five. Three off-street parking spaces are required, and three are provided. The third parking space does overhang the public right-of-way but is located inside the driveway, does not impede pedestrian or vehicular access. Number ten, twenty is by Shelley Arnaldi in the Bayside District at thirty-nine twenty-one Whipping Crane Circle. Staff recommends, recommended approval. Planning Commission voted eight-to-zero to recommend denial. This is a townhome in the, in this neighborhood, and is a two-bedroom townhome, and two parking spaces are required, and two are provided, with one of the parking spaces shown to be located within the garage. Opposition did come and speak at the Planning Commission public hearing, noting the density of the, of the surrounding neighborhood, as well as potential impacts with the operator previously operating as a short-term rental. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank. Okay, moving on to council liaison reports. Anybody? Council comment. Mr. Wood.
Well, just, just a congratulatory comment for Councilmember Abbott, Councilmember Berluci, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Wooton, and Mayor Dyer for outstanding campaigns that you all ran, and the fact that you all won. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, Ms. Abbott and Mr. Rouse.
Thank you. I wanted, I've shared with some of you, I wanted to share conversations I've had with the Planning Commission regards, regarding our request for them to review the ordinance that was, ordinances that were referred back to them. I've been reached out by the Vice Chair, Mr. Weiner, and there is some concern with their deadline. And I'd like to ask Mr. Styles to explain what potential predicament we may be in, in terms of making sure they have adequate time to do public outreach.
So, the, the issue here is that the state code, Virginia Code Section fifteen point two, twenty-two eighty-five B, to be specific, provides that any amendment to a zoning ordinance must be referred by the governing body to the local planning commission. And then the planning commission has one hundred days from its first meeting after that referral to make a recommendation. And if it fails to make a recommendation within that one hundred-day period, then they're deemed to have approved the application. Now, as I was looking at that a moment ago, their meeting, as I understand it, was on November four, after your referral on October twenty, so that gives them into February, I think to February, somewhere around February twelve, to come back to you with a recommendation. Now, if they don't come back to you with a, a recommendation, again, the state code says that they are deemed to have approved it. But if you don't take it up and deal with it one way or the other before they come back with a recommendation, I'm assuming that you would let them tell you what they really thought before you acted. So, you know, you have a statutory requirement here. How big a deal it ends up actually being, I'm not convinced of, because, you know, if they're not going to be able to give you that recommendation within, within the hundred days, then my recommendation to them would be that they go ahead and tell you that they don't approve it as written, but they're still working on it. And then they would have additional time to give you whatever recommendation they wanted after that point, without running the risk that it's just deemed approved by default. So, I mean, I, I think they would have, I, I think their meeting in February is February ten, so they, they would have three more months to come to you with a, to do public outreach and to come up with a recommendation. I, I just don't know how much time they're actually looking for.
Well, if I, if I could, the concern is that they're worried that the majority of the public outreach that they would like to do is scheduled over the holiday, and they don't feel that that is an appropriate time to have meaningful public input. And so, my intention of bringing this up is just to, one, make us aware of the statutory requirement, as well as, you know, a concern that has been shared with me, and perhaps we need to, even if it's just we acknowledge that, you know, they may have to come back in a formal sense and say, hey, we're not ready yet. But I, I, I think it's food for thought, and I, I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same, same page and had the same information I had.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What your council asks before you right now is to draft resolution. This resolution is requesting the creation of a single mobile portal for city services and information. What I've been hearing a lot from residents and our constituents is that it's kind of hard to really navigate our website and find information, whether it be the agenda or far as outreach and engagement throughout our city. And the fact that we have seven different, different or multiple apps, instead of one central location where this information can help get to our, our constituents. So, what this resolution does is basically, it states that to direct the, the city manager to create a single mobile portal for single services and information, also seek an input from our community as to the functionality and content of the portal, and provide the city council with periodic updates. And I think I had preliminary meetings with the IT Department as well as the city manager. And I think we're prepared next week to, for the IT Department to come and give us a presentation on that. And then after that, I'll ask for a vote on it.
I think that's a great idea, Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I was just going to say, that's an excellent idea. I've, I've got several of these apps on my phone, and I can't figure out which one to use when I want to report something. And it kind of reminds me back, back, I guess, before I was on council, when they first rolled out the VB GOV website. And, and, you know, Virginia Beach was the, was the leader in the region for, for doing that sort of thing. And I think it's great that, that you're bringing this up, because this is something that's desperately needed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss?
Well, first, Paul, and I know that the city manager's Cincinnati website was certainly more functional and intuitive than ours, so I know he'll bring that insight to that process, because clearly ours is not intuitive and could use some improvement, but everything can. I did send everyone an email. I'm going to cover these items, not in detail, because I do appreciate people's time. But I do think these are topics which have not, which we need to address. And we, and I looked at the three-year tentative schedule of the city council. They're not on there. And I don't want the clock to run out out of neglect that they aren't addressed. One is a twenty-twenty-one bond referendum for flood mitigation projects. That's a lot of work that goes with that. There needs to be some serious discussions. I've had some discussions with the, the city manager, but we really need to get a timeline and have some milestones that we're working against, so that we can be there and have an intelligent engagement with our citizens, and also have a, I guess you would call it, a contingent appendix to our CIP, assuming that it were to pass. So I think there's some homework that needs to be done. This other item is the Independent Redistricting Commission for City Council. You know, we adopted that in our legislative package for the state. The voters overwhelmingly endorsed it. I think we would be well to adopt something similar for doing redistricting in our own community. The census will be over fairly soon. Certainly, it has some relationship to our voting rights litigation, and that should be an active topic on our discussion, and that really is a policy decision for us to make. I, I did watch the informal session when I was in North Carolina, and I hope we can spend an hour and a half talking about flooding, since we spent an hour and a half talking about rec centers. But do we have a date, Mr. Mayor, that we're targeting for to adopt this budget guidance resolution? Is that out, out something that's going to come out of the retreat in December? But what's the timeline that we are on, and when's our next discussion on that?
Well, if I recall, Mr. Moss, we held off on the discussion. We did have it scheduled, but you weren't here, and we obviously wanted you here, and there was another council member also not here. But maybe we can get that, at least for the discussion on the, was it the twenty-fourth in our workshop?
Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Moss, while you were gone, when we had the conversation, we ended up at council directing, basically asking staff that on December fifteenth, we dedicate at least a half a day to discuss budget guidance, and also for the city manager to give his sense of the priorities that we should take on based on my ninety days here, and plus my conversations with the members of council as well.
Very good.
And one of the items that we plan to discuss is the budget guidance, and also the bond referendum as well, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city manager. You always impress me. I only talked about the convention tourism force recommendation, so I won't belabor that point. But this is one, I think, that is fundamentally very important. And I don't know what the final discussion and direction was. This market salary survey, you know, I wrote you all a fairly exhaustive discussion about how important this was, and how important it was to be done right, in my opinion, to be a total compensation thing. My feedback from HR is that that, within a two-hundred thousand dollar, that wasn't possible, and that she thought that an RFP would be required to look at that. The reason why I'm so advocate and strong about this is, if we're going to get a result that we are going to have to then make resource allocation decisions about, then we want to make sure that we don't have any weak chinks in the armor, so to speak, no weak links in the chain, and we can really go out with confidence, engage the public, and explain to them that we have taken all that into consideration. So, I hope that's the track that we are on. But if we are not, I would like, not today, because obviously our schedule's full, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to have a follow-on discussion. I would like to, I think we want, if we do this, I'm going to take the effort, because the expectation by our employees will be huge, and we certainly don't want to find ourselves not in a position to implement what we find.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tahan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moss, I think that was a similar meeting where you were down taking care of your mother. And I think what we left with, what we took away from that was that there's going to be an ordinance or resolution coming before council for council to consider, and as part of the RFP process, that's going to be one of the scope that we look into as well. And once we get a sense of what the price would be to add, that plus what we initially intended to do, we will bring that back to council to talk about what it would be if it's not within the budget that was authorized for that procurement.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Wooton?
First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Wood for the congratulatory comment. Indeed, I'm honored to serve a second term on city council. I have two items that I would like to bring to your attention. The first one is a follow-up to an email that I sent, I believe it was sometime last week, regarding the resolution to declare November fifteenth through December fifteenth, twenty twenty, as bi-local month. And as I mentioned in my email communication to you, now more than ever, it's important for us to rally around our local businesses and local business owners and support them. And so this resolution is just to encourage that support to buy local throughout this time period and throughout the year.
And it is on the agenda for next week?
Yes, it is. And I do have a copy of the resolution. I can pass it around to you for your review. The second item I just would like to bring to your attention is the next Ignite Business Seminar. For some time, in my engagement with the community, there's always been a concern and a request for more resources for our veterans. And just a more of a, an understanding that we do have a veterans' community here, and that they do want, need, and desire services from our city. And so this particular Ignite Series focuses on service-disabled veterans, as well as veterans in general. And the seminar is going to focus on also just the transition period from the military to whether it be another career, starting a business, or educational opportunities. And I would certainly invite the council to provide any type of input or feedback that they would like to regarding that seminar. But just wanted to make you aware of that. It will take place the twenty-first. It will be in-person and virtual. And there is a, a link on the website for VB GOV for people to sign up if they want to attend in person. The limit will be fifty, and if they want to attend virtually, they can do that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, council agenda review.
Do we have any additional speakers other than the ones that you all gave me?
No, sir.
Okay. So, under ordinances resolutions, we have a single speaker on every item, but other than that, we have no, no speakers in opposition to anything. So, if we want to go, if there's anybody that has comments, Mr. Moss, you had your hand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moss, could you please turn your microphone on? Thank you.
This is on item one, because I think Mrs. Henley's going to address item two. But on item one, this is another case where we're changing the program scope of eligibility, and it has not been preceded by a public hearing. So I would definitely support a deferral, so we can have a public hearing on it. I did ask a number of questions about the program expansion in terms of number of parcels, cost, whatnot, that yet have not yet been answered, or at least they're not at my dais. If they have been answered, maybe they could be answered tonight, but I just think, consistent with our policy, we generally don't make policy programmatic scope changes without a public hearing. So I'll vote yes for a deferral, but if it's on consent for approval, my vote is no.
All right. Does anybody else want to do anything with that?
Well, I think, speaking with council, our woman, Henley, I think we just, we want to get more, at least I wasn't here, and Mr. Dale was out with food poisoning, but just have some more discussion on item number two. Okay, yeah, so I just.
So, on, on item one, Ms. Henley, that, that's at your request? Did you, what was your pleasure on that?
I'm perfectly fine if we want to defer it for a week, or it's, it's a, just a small technicality change in the program, which has been thoroughly discussed at the Agricultural Advisory Commission for many months. But in recognizing that we were getting these applications that had to be rejected because of this technicality, it was thought if we made this adjustment, it would allow a good bit of property to be in the program that now is not eligible. So, it's up to your discretion if you would like to defer it a week, that's fine, or if you're comfortable in going forward, that's fine as well.
What, does, does the rest of the council, are you okay with the deferral for one week? Is anybody opposed to a deferral?
Anybody opposed not deferring it? Opposed? Okay.
Can, can we also get, Ms. Henley, more information on what was discussed at the agricultural meetings?
Well, it's, the, the transmittal letter is pretty descriptive of what it, it, the, the issue. It's just that, simply because the, the way the ordinance is, or it's not an ordinance, or the way the policy or the program is now, if a property has to have any kind of council approval, it's not eligible to be in, in agres- it's not eligible to be in ag reserve. But because a lot of the properties down there, just by where they are, there may be some, the area in the front of the property, or maybe it's a flag lot that maybe has the low spot on the farm, but the rest of the farm is, you know, has the elevations and so forth. But because it would require a council action to have a subdivision variance or have a variance across the low area, then the property is just not eligible for ARP. And so this would just take that, that exception out and allow those properties to be considered for ARP, still based on how much developmental land they have and all of the other things that are a part of the program. So it's just sort of that, a technical thing that has caused a lot of properties that apply to not be eligible for the program. But if, you know, if you have, want any specific data or anything, we'll certainly be glad to have it. But it's, it's just that they are finding that people are asking to be considered for the program, but they're not available, not eligible because of this technicality.
Okay. On consent for one week deferral.
But I would like to discuss the second one a bit.
Go right ahead.
If you recall, and I know it's been a very busy, very unusual last two months, about two months ago, Mr. Rouse and I were designated by the mayor, or asked by the mayor, to look at this issue of redevelopment and infill property. And so we started that process and just trying to talk about it with stakeholders and with a staff group of people to see where to go. And one of the things that came out of this fairly early on was the need to do more civic engagement. And several weeks ago, I passed around to you a draft policy of how we might encourage more civic engagement, a policy that, you know, had just been developed by some of the folks from the planning department who recognized the issue and the things that might come up and so forth. So I had distributed that to you. And subsequent weeks, under council liaison reports and comments, I would comment to you to please read it, give me any feedback, let me know, and that kind of thing. I got one council response from Mr. Moss. And then on the 27th, we had had another meeting of the work group, the staff group and so forth, to discuss the issue, and it was on the workshop agenda. But again, we ran out of time, and I knew we didn't have time to do the PowerPoint presentation. But I said, let me just ask the council what you want to do and get some direction. And so if you recall, I described for you the fact that we had kind of, in discussions with people, had realized that the whole issue of determining the uses for these properties were a much longer-term kind of thing that would really need probably to be just done as a part of the comprehensive plan review. And so we, I was not thinking that we wanted to move forward with that kind of discussion. One thing that is really a problem, I think, with everything we're trying to do now, is with COVID, we're not able to have meetings and these large community conversations that we would normally have if we were going to be doing a major issue. And so this idea of developing any kind of new program or policy is really stymied by that. I had suggested that we, we ask people to send in written comments, text messages, emails, letters, or whatnot on this issue. But there's just this uncertainty about how to move forward. So the whole question of what should be the uses for these properties, we were just saying, it looks like that ought to be done just as a part of the comprehensive plan process. So that left this, this question of how to do more public outreach and civic engagement, which had been the topic of that draft policy that, you know, I had given to you for review. And I think the response at the October 27th discussion, which was still rather brief from council, where some of you said that you thought that was a very good thing, something we ought to pursue, and to come forward with some proposal. And so that's what we did. Whether we want to do it, I think probably we do need more council discussion at this point. But one thing, it got a lot of attention when it appeared on the council agenda, even though I think that's premature, because it has given the, the community the information that we're talking about this. But the thing that did happen after that, with your direction to bring something forward, the city attorney's office did take that policy and go through it and make it very clear that this was just voluntary. It's an encouragement to try some of these things. It's a pilot project, policy to gauge the effectiveness of varying public encouragement outreach measures and with, with the neighboring and surrounding property owners. One thing that's so important to recognize is that if there's going to be a redevelopment or an infill project, in almost every instance, there's going to be residential property in existence, that the people have been living there for many years. And I think the message that we want to send is that we're going to be considering the impacts on those neighboring properties. And we would like for the applicant to be aware that we're going to be considering that. And we ask that, that they include such things in their application as to how their work is going to impact surrounding properties and what they're going to do to try to mitigate that. But then we also suggested that there should be a variety of outreach measures to relay the information and details to the surrounding neighborhoods and suggest that they use two of what was called a level-one things, anything that they, any of those that they might suggest or might decide to follow, and then a couple of another level of, of public input, so that we're not just relying on a sign and an ad in the paper and a notification to immediately adjoining properties. That's what we've been doing for years, and obviously, that's not quite enough. There needs to be more civic engagement in a broader fashion. And because I think it's going to take different things for different kinds of properties, at this point, I would not be comfortable in making any kind of requirement that specific things be done. I think a trial is probably a good way to do this, because it allows different things to be tried. A small application may do one thing very effectively, whereas a large application may need something else. And so the suggestion being that we do something voluntary for a trial to, but to let applicants know that we're going to be looking for some of these kinds of things. And I was, I picked up on the glimpses report, if you did. The proposed resident, kennel in, down at Mundon Point, had three speakers that came and spoke and said they appreciated the fact that they, the applicant had reached out to the neighbors. I think this can be a very positive thing for everybody if we have the applicant reach out to the neighbors in whatever is an appropriate way for that particular application and let the people know what they're proposing and how they're going to do it and how they're going to be concerned about the neighbors. I think it can be very positive for everybody. And I think it can avoid an awful lot of what we have been seeing, and that is applicants coming before us for a final vote, and we have speaker after speaker coming up and saying, we need to have this deferred so we can have more public conversation. Obviously, what we're doing now isn't really working well. And so at this point, we have, and in the couple of days since this did hit the agenda, I have, as I said, finally gotten some feedback. I've gotten some, which we will certainly make available to all of you, some suggestions from a neighborhood who wants something very strict that's required. We have some from some applicants who say, hey, it's overburdensome. We need to soften the words in a couple of places and make sure that it allows reasonable reporting. And we've had something from, you know, one of our planning commission people on our workshops that said that they thought what we were doing now was fine. So we kind of go to the extreme, but I think what we're looking for is that sweet spot where it's, it's good for everybody, and it's going to be different for, for different kinds of applications. But I think that's what we have to work out. But another thing that I think doing it this way, with the applicant making certain that they are reaching out to the public, is that they can make sure they're presenting the accurate information. Because I think that's what happens a lot of the time when, when it's just kind of left up to word of mouth. All kinds of things get in there. And so I think what we're looking for is suggestions, ideas, working it out. And so this is kind of what I'm saying, and of course, Mr. Rouse was not at the last meeting to give his input, and he's a part of this, so I want to hear what he has to say. But I think it's up to council now. We've looked at it. This is what we think, or I think, and I'm passing on to you some of the things that I've gotten from folks. And so now it's up to you as to what you want to do with it.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Henley. As she stated, I think she's done a lot of, a lot of work and been, been very, very involved in getting us to where we are. My only thoughts and concerns would be the fact that I think we need to be more clear that this is a voluntary basis is really a pilot going through. But at the same time, I want to be careful in making sure that, in the way that we are trying to really get in outreach to our communities, that we outreach the, we do the same outreach for the applicants who may have some credible insight on how we can really make this piece of legislation really conducive to a healthy way of developing our, our community. And so with that being said, I'd like to hear other council members' input as well. But again, this is, this is a pilot program, and I think we, we have time to get this right. And even still, when, before it comes before a council, I think we'll still have a window to really iron all the kinks there is to this, so.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
So I think, just kind of, because we're still on the agenda review here. So am I hearing that y'all would prefer to have it deferred?
It's up to council. I'm saying that I don't know what, I know we want more input, but I really think the way to get input is with experience and people trying things. And I, I think to just defer it for discussion, I don't think that's going to get us too far, because we've got too many unknowns and ideas. So however, we can get this to the point to try it and work on it, I think is what, what is valuable. But see, we're running into this whole thing about not being able to have meetings and not being able to go to groups and talk about it and get their feedback that way. I suggested written comments.
Well, let me, let me just.
I don't know what we, we've got to make sure if we defer it, what we're deferring it to do.
Okay. We have three speakers on, on that particular item. I misspoke earlier when I said. So we have three speakers in favor of, of this item who want to speak. However, I think if we defer it, I don't know if you could, if you could reach the speakers and see if they, they still want to speak. But, but I think if, if there is a deferral, well, I mean, Mr. Berluci has.
Mr. Berluci.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank council members Henley and Rouse for bringing this forward. I would strongly recommend deferral. The reason is that this is a policy that's related to public engagement that has had no public engagement, and it's just a really simple concept. And if we're going to hold applicants and residential neighborhoods to a standard, we should at least extend the courtesy of adhering to that standard ourselves. And with respect to my colleagues, no such standard has been applied. There has been little or no public engagement related to formulating this policy. And I have concerns about adopting it even as a pilot. And so I would simply ask, and if we're going to hear the, if we're going to hear it, that will be perfectly fine, and we can have further discussion then. But I would strongly recommend and request deferral.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend we go ahead and hear this.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I know that Barbara brought this up, but we never really had anything in front of us to, to look at, to really, until it came on the agenda, and appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, at this point, you know, we got to get into exactly, and we're going to, the recommendation is to hear it, and then we can have the discussion then?
Okay, but there's something else I'd like to say, if you don't mind.
Okay, go right ahead.
Two things. The, it doesn't, it talks about the, being a pilot on the first page, but it doesn't talk about it in the policy. But I guess if we want to make this a recommendation and a suggestion, do we really need to make it a public policy? Because when you make it a public policy, that makes it put it more in stone. I mean, why can't we just sort of try it out without making it a policy? Because I have a concern, if you make it a policy, then it's going to look like this is, it doesn't look like it's a pilot. So that's what I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Wood?
So going back to the agenda review. So other, other than item one, which will be deferred, 1117, item two, which will be heard, does anybody have any issues with the remaining items?
We're good? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition for publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A 3, Council District. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 A 29, Beach District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, briefings by the staff members or consultants pursuant to actual or probable litigation where such consultations or briefings in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A 7, Adams Outdoor versus City of Virginia Beach. Personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, disciplining or resignation of a specific officer's appointees or employees at public body pursuant to 2.237 A 1. Discussions, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Eleven to zero.